You say ready or waiting for Sean?
I think I'm gonna wait for Sean.
Waiting for Sean.
Okay, wait for him. Give me a minute, Sean.
It's all right. Okay, we ready, Pat?
They're ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Lawrence Licensing Board is now in order for December 13, 2017. Members in order from left to right are Chairman Jorge Hernandez, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Jorge Hernandez, Commissioner Ronald Martin, myself, Pedro Torres, Chairman. To my right Lieutenant Sean Conway from the Lawrence Police Department, and Lieutenant Paul McElrom from the Lawrence Fire Department.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the November 15 meeting.
Second.
The motion on the floor has been seconded to accept the minutes of November 15. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being televised and recorded. The next board meeting will be in January 10. First item on the agenda is discussion in a roll call vote to be taken on the alcohol establishment renewals for 2018. Before we make a vote, we have a couple licenses that we're gonna bring present to the Commissioners and Lieutenant and Sean and Paul McElrom. The first one's Mr. Santiago's. They're having problems. They paid, but the check came back, and also they didn't clear City Hall. So we're gonna hold this license till everything's gonna get cleared up. It's Santiago's Flowers on Essex Street. Anybody have any comments on that? The next one's gonna be 809 Sports Bar. It's been closed for about seven months, and they reapplied for their license, but they're not open. So we're gonna be holding that license also. The next one is gonna be Ward 6. We sent them out a couple letters about a month ago, and they never got back to us answers, so we're gonna be holding theirs for not being in compliance. The next one's gonna be Macarena. The manager, no manager. They actually, we haven't seen a manager in there in about six months. Comment?
We met a gentleman during our 304 inspection, and he said he was the new manager.
Well, this board has not had an application for a new manager. So they're gonna be, their license is gonna be held. That's Macarena. The next one's gonna be Melinda's. The reason being, they've been closed for over a year. So they also are gonna have their license held. Is there anybody else missing, Pat? Or is that... Oh, there's one more. There's La Cava Restaurant.
DB Entertainment.
DB Entertainment. The present manager over a year. They've applied for a change of manager, and for some reason or another, it hasn't gone through Boston. And the fellow that the license is under made the city aware that he does not want that place open under his name. So we're gonna be holding that license as the new year comes. Do you have any questions?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the licenses for 2018 with the exception of Santiago Flowers, 809 Sports Bar, Ward 6 Club, Macarena, Melinda's, and La Cava.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a roll call. Commissioner Jorge Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ronald Martin?
Aye.
Myself, Chairman Pedro Torres?
Aye.
Three, zero. The ayes have it. Okay, next item on the agenda is gonna be a one-day alcohol permit for the inaugural committee for Galleria Bank for Pacific Mills. Your name for the record?
Cindy Parnagian for the Party Connection.
Okay. Questions, Lieutenant?
No, I already, I met with somebody from this. They know they have to buy their alcohol from a distributor, and they're gonna be hiding from the police detail.
Where is that located, the Pacific Mills?
Right across from the courthouse.
300 Canal.
They got like a function hall, or?
They have, it's all wide open. It's a downstairs.
That's nice.
Okay, I'll make a motion we approve the one-day alcohol permit for the inaugural committee.
Second.
The motion on the floor has been seconded for a one-day alcohol permit for the inaugural committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, there's one for you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Old Business Carolina Alonso, DB Elite Lounge versus Ms. Wendy Peralta, 336 Commons Street. Please say your name for the record.
Carolina Alonso. Wendy Peralta.
Please speak into the microphone.
Wendy Peralta.
Okay. So you guys, you gotta stand in front of the mic, please, so we can hear you if you speak. Have you guys settled this problem already, or is it still ongoing?
It's still ongoing. I mean, we did some modifications to the apartment, but it's still very loud. But my understanding is that she was selling the apartment, right? And we make an agreement that she was gonna sell the apartment to us, and then her husband was calling me, and he was calling me to the wrong number. So I spoke to him, so they already sell the apartment to somebody else, and we are in the process to contact the buyer agent. But we happen...
So, so the apartment's sold?
Yes, to another person.
So you're not gonna be living there anymore?
I can't live there.
So when are you moving?
The conditions I'm living at. I was literally forced to sell, basically, because it's just unlivable. So, yeah, it's under contract right now.
When do you think you'll pass papers? When do you think you'll pass papers on this, ma'am?
The 23rd, I believe, is the closing.
Of January, or this month?
Of this month. And then her husband told me to contact the buyer's agent, and we, like, we already hired a lawyer, that he can come here and talk to you guys, that he'd been contacting the lawyer, I mean, the buyer's agent, for us to buy the apartment to the other person because they don't want the apartment either, because the same problem.
All right. So, so basically, you're gonna be out of there by the 23rd, and you're gonna buy the apartment?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, at this time, I guess, there's really nothing. You just gotta hope that somebody else doesn't move there, and you continue to have the same problem.
Isn't a lead coming back on the 10th, Pat?
Yes.
Well, we'll see you on the 10th.
Okay.
So you guys, even though you haven't got the paperwork yet, I'll see you January 10th for hearing. You'll get all your paperwork. There's a hearing coming down.
And what is the reason?
You'll see, you'll see the police reports. All right?
No problem.
Should've got it in the mail already, no, Pat?
Should've got it in the mail.
We sent it registered.
January 10th.
So I'm telling you right now, January 10th?
Yes.
6:00 PM, you guys gotta be here for that hearing.
Okay, because I got the mail from this date. I got it when I came, remember? And you told me that you sent me an email, and I got it the same day.
But I sent it to the business address.
No, I always check, but I haven't got anything yet. But I would check.
You've been duly notified by me, okay? The 10th, 6:00 PM, right here.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we take no action tonight on the Elite Lounge.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor for no action on Elite Lounge. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a used car retail office space only. And this used car retail space only is for an application that was, is it, anybody else here from Seven Genies Car Care?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Why don't you come on up?
Anybody that's here for this issue, please come up to the mic, please.
I'm the translator.
Okay. You're a translator for who?
Go ahead.
Okay. So just so we can strain out who's who here.
Yes.
Naseem Attar from Seven Genies, owner of Seven Genies and owner of the property of 291 to 299 Broadway.
Okay, and you are?
George Hason, I'm the assistant manager of Seven Genies.
Okay, and you are, sir?
I'm George Barsam, I'm his attorney.
Okay, and his name for the record, please?
Marcelo Rojas.
Speak up.
Your name for the record?
Marcelo Rojas.
Okay, who's the other guy?
That's his brother.
Does he have anything to do with it?
Does he have a name?
We'll take care of that. We'll take care of that.
Marcelo Rojas.
Okay, thank you.
What's your name, sir? You're the translator. Would you please give your name?
My name is Christina Huertas.
Thank you. We appreciate your help.
Does anybody have any comments before we start?
Can I go comment? I'd like to say a couple things.
Go ahead.
Mr. Rojas has owned this license since 2005. I submitted a certificate of transfer that he had obtained when the license was on Medford Street, and then he relocated his license to Broadway. He's been operating there since 2008, or 2008, I believe it's 2008, and he's been paying his license every year with the city. Hasn't violated any laws. And as of late, Mr. Attar has made it a little difficult for him to operate out of 299 Broadway. And as such, Mr. Rojas wants to relocate back to Medford Street. He came in here to apply for his license, where he was told that Mr. Attar had come in here and informed the clerk that Mr. Rojas had gone out of business, and that he had abandoned the property, which isn't the case because, you know, he still has receipts, he has cars that he needs to sell, but he doesn't have a place that he can sell them out of, and that's the reason why. He wants to go back to his previous location on Medford Street and bring his license back there.
Do you have any comments, sir?
Sure. First of all, I haven't leased him any property. Second, I have not even allowed him or signed that he can renew his license. I just want to ask the City Hall how he is doing license on my property without any signature from me. It's number one. Number two, I never said that he was gone out of business. I said to her, since the city impounded his cars from my lot, and that was like April or May, he never showed up there. He don't even have an office there. So he has no car since April on my lot. And that, it's my lot. I never leased it to him. I never allowed him any writing so he can. Can you tell me, sir, how he is doing this license for the last six years without my agreement?
Hell no, you!
So you've owned Seven Genies for quite a while. You bought it right after Goodyear sold it, yeah? Because I remember us taking a bunch of cars out of there when I was a sergeant. That was, as they say, many moons ago, about maybe 15 years ago. And if I recall, the cars weren't supposed, there was too many cars on the lot because there wasn't a design, a property design. So you've been collecting rent from this gentleman, correct?
No.
When was the last time?
No, I haven't collected any penny from him.
Since when?
Since my life. I never get any penny from him. Since I was born.
Okay, so, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, come on. Let's get into reality here. He's been down, he's been, he's been relocated since 2008.
Yes.
You're telling me he's been squatting in your building since 2008? You have not received one penny?
Can you ask me if he has paid me anything?
Wait a minute, sir. I'm asking you as the...
I am not getting any penny.
You've never received any payments?
Never.
Then why would you allow somebody to be in your building, on your property, for approximately, let's call it 10 years?
No, it's six years.
Nine years?
Yes.
And you have, and you've allowed somebody to stay on your property that didn't pay?
Sir, he came to me, and he says he has no place to go, and I allowed him to do it. Doesn't mean that gives him the right...
When did you allow that, sir? When did you allow that?
Six years back.
So 2008?
I believe so.
All right, so that's nine years, but that's all right. Can I, can I ask this gentleman to step forward, please?
Excuse me.
Go ahead. So you came over from your old location?
I'm from the...
Where was, where was that?
That I saw.
4850 Medford Street.
Oh, for Medford Street, I'm sorry. You gotta speak closer to the microphone, gentlemen. So you went over to Seven Genies at 299 Broadway approximately in 2008?
I went to the Broadway in 2008.
No, 2011.
2011.
Do you have any type of paperwork that tells us you went over there? Because to be honest with you...
I've got copies of his license.
But I've got the license of the dealer.
Yeah, you've been renewing the licenses? Okay. If this, to me, to be honest with you, this looks like it's a landlord-tenant dispute in which rents weren't paid. That's not something that this licensing board holds. Now, we were told last week, or at the last meeting, that this, that you had abandoned the property, and he was basically, you know, wanted the license, wanted to get the license back to him. So I mean, this is, this is an issue. The licensing part is us, the selling of the cars is the police section of it. So I'm looking at receipts here, 09, 06, 08's Medford, Medford, 09 is Medford. I just wanna look through these real quick. 06 is Medford, 10 is Medford, 11 you're in, you're on Broadway. 33111 Broadway, and this is 9/11/19 in 2012, second-hand auto, a Class II license. So I guess it's a little bit of a, of a problem. You wanna take a look at that, Mr. Chairman?
So...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
You allowed him to use, come up to the mic, sir. I got a question for you.
Yes.
You allowed him to use your property, though. At some point, you said it's okay, I'm gonna let you come over here, you bring your cars, and I'm gonna let you use the place, right?
Yeah, I mean, the first, just, the agreement was between him and my brother, actually. That's how it started. And he told him, I want this place five years, and I will give you my license. Right? You know English. I know that you know English. Okay, yeah. I know you know English better than me.
All right, all right.
Better than me. Okay? So that was, and when the five years were over, he did not do anything. Now we get in the sixth year, and he has that problem, and the city impounded his cars, and that was like April or May, and since then, he has no car on my property. I even cleaned it, that part. I cleaned everything.
Has your property ever had a used car license before? Me?
Yeah.
Your property?
Yeah, I did.
It's had one?
Yeah. Grandfather.
So then why would you want his license?
It's not his license. We, we, we just, my name's George Hason.
Huh?
My name's George Hason.
Go in front of the mic.
Speak at the microphone, sir.
And we, as I speak with a friend, too, his name Marcelo Rojas, which I heard him, Marcelo Rojas, him, Marcelo Rojas, too, tonight on record. I don't know which one, Marcelo Rojas. They lost the license on Medford Street. They need some place. They came into my cousin's place, and I said, okay, you can use the place temporarily, so you'll find another place. But they had an issue with Linway Auto Auction. We have a problem. They came in the city, they vacuumed everything, they took everything, they're looking for him, he wasn't around. The guy died, Reuben, and we have an issue with that Auto Plaza. So it never had. They cleaned up the place, and we cost us like almost 15, 18 hundred bucks, 200 yard. So all of a sudden, this year, when I have to clean the yard, my cousin says, I'm gonna apply for new license. I said, go ahead. Okay, man, did his job. And we own the property, we own everything.
We have it on recording when he came in and said that he had abandoned the property. We have it on recording.
On what?
On the meeting.
Yes.
When they came in and said he was applying for the license because he had abandoned the property.
Abandoned.
He was buying the property.
Yes. So...
Which property is buying? Not us.
Do you guys have proof of him making a lease with Medford Street or anything?
Recently, or from prior?
From now?
No, we're waiting to get the license back to him, and then we can submit a new application with a new lease to Medford Street.
What normally happens is, you fill out the paperwork once you have the lease, because you're gonna have to come in with a property design, because we're gonna need to know how many cars you wanna put in there, and then there's a formula that they use in zoning to tell you how many cars you can have in there. So you would need to have all that before you came to this, because this is the final board. We, the board people have to vote on it, Paul and I have to look at everything along with the designs from the city engineers and stuff like that. So that's all done, that would be done prior. All that legwork, all that groundwork would be done prior, and then, you know, when you submit the paperwork for going back to Medford Street.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of any of that, because I...
Yeah, no, that's all right. It's an honest mistake. We know that. People come in all the time, they're just not sure. Now, does this gentleman have stuff in the building? Does he have his equipment?
He has...
No.
Okay.
I would, I mean, we just say void both these licenses, and then they can, they can come in individually and...
They're gonna resubmit properly.
So basically, my recommendation would be to void both licenses, and then you're both gonna have to come in and reapply for separate licenses. Because the way I see it is, you already have, you already have, you can apply for your license, it's already zoned for it.
Well, it is. Well, that's what the license is.
The license actually belongs to the property, not to the owner. To be honest, as far as I'm concerned, that license should have never been transferred from Medford Street. You know, it was never probably made by the city, transferring the license. It should have been issued as a new license, because you're not supposed to transfer licenses from one lot to another. So basically, that was a mistake that was done by the city probably back then. So basically, if he's going to Medford Street, he needs to get a lease, come in, and reapply for his license. And yourself, you come in and you reapply for your license at the situation.
What's my problem? Can you...
Yeah, but I'll, I think maybe I can explain this better. Each license that you get for individual, for each individual property must have a plot plan with it, a design plan, a parking plan, as to how many cars you plan to put in there. You may want 15, but that property may only be designed for seven. So that's, that's what it does. No, that's the law. So if you want, if you want a license for 299, you fill out the paperwork, or you want a license for 4850 Medford Street, you fill out the property.
Yes, but we have it on record.
You fill out the paperwork, you fill out the paperwork, you give us a design, it clears zoning, and then it comes back here, and it gets voted on.
But we have it on record.
Different owner, different property.
The inspector's already there, and he sees it, and he signs for it.
But there's no car limit, because...
There's a car limit, it's really on record.
Oh, okay, yeah, he never had it.
On record. By the city belongs.
You gotta go through the whole process. You gotta go through the whole process.
So you gotta start from scratch.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
With regards to the license, when I was speaking with Patricia, she was telling me that, you know, these licenses, there's not many available, that there's only, you know...
Correct, they belong to the property.
So with regards to my client reapplying, and this gentleman here reapplying, what is it, first come, first served basis?
No, if Medford Street has an existing license, and it's always had one?
Yep.
That license will always be there for that property. The same thing with him.
Okay.
If that has an existing license, that license will always be there for that property.
Beautiful.
Okay?
So the point is to revive our license back, which is, it's on record in the city file. It has like the plot plan, or the parking lot...
You have to bring that, yeah.
But it's in the record here. It's already here.
When did you, when did you do that?
That was like back in the 80s.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to get a new one now.
My license, it says, I mean, my repair license, it has, it says that that lot is for 21 cars. Yeah.
For that...
Block, everything.
All right. But hold on, hold on. I'm not gonna get into, I'm not doubting that you think this is for 21 cars. But what I'm saying is, that might be for 21 cars in this certain state of repair. Or, I don't know if it says for sale. So what you would have to do, what you would have to do, I know it's a separate lot, I know exactly where your lot is, I've been down there a million times. We'll look through our stuff, see if we can't locate a plot plan for you. In the meantime, do it. If we can't, you're gonna have to get one. That's, that's just the way it is. That's the procedure for the city.
So we can get a plot plan, and put the parking in the back, and how many cars...
And the city will, the city will, the city will look at it. It's not a, it's really not a hard thing to do. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you understand what you need to do, sir, for your client? Okay. I figured you did.
Thank you.
No problem. Appreciate that, guys.
You guys have a wonderful...
You too, have a, have a nice Christmas.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we void both licenses for Genie Car Care and Auto Plaza.
Second.
So the motion on the floor has been seconded to revoke the two licenses at Genie, Seven Genie Car Care and Auto Plaza on Medford Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Sorry?
No, you're all set.
You're all set.
The next item for the agenda is a new alcohol application for Sazón Peru Pesco Bar and Grill at 89 South Broadway.
He's got stipulations on his...
It's not a lot, you're gonna make him aware of that. That's the old, what is it? Miranda's, was it?
Yeah, that's that one by the fight. Fantasy, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, right, 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 right. Yeah, that's right.
Your name for the record, sir?
Good evening to the board. My name is Attorney Kyle Guy. I represent Sazón Peru, Paico Bar and Grill LLC, and I'm here tonight with our manager, Alberto Rojas.
Have you, do you know any information about this, the existing license that was at that property?
Yes, I have a copy of the existing license, or the old license, and there might be one in that package. And we're also aware of the restrictions that were on that old license pursuant to, I believe, a ZBA decision back in 2010.
Is he aware of it, your attorney?
Yes. Yeah, we've gone over it.
And he has no problem with the restrictions?
Not at all.
I don't see the restrictions.
I'm just trying to find my copy of it, just so...
Sure.
On the same page.
I'd, I'd be happy to send my copy up if you guys...
I found it. One second.
He's aware that he can't have alcohol after midnight?
That is correct.
Right. Yeah, conditions, ZBA. Monday through Wednesday, 11 to 9, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It says 11 to 3 AM. That's if they were serving food. But the alcohol...
Alcohol is stopped at midnight on all nights. But obviously, Monday through Wednesday, they're not open, up until midnight.
Okay, as long as he's aware of all the regulations with the times. Anybody have any other questions for him?
No. Okay, I'll make a motion we approve the all alcohol application for Sazón Peru Pesco Bar and Grill.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor has been seconded for approval of new alcohol for Sazón Peru. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
We'd like to thank the board for its time. Thank you.
Thank you. The application tomorrow morning.
Okay, next item on the agenda is... Okay, next item on the agenda is Mi Casa Adult Day Healthcare Center LLC at three thirty-three Broadway. This is for common victuals license. Your name for the record?
Gennadijsken.
Kendres Vasquez, City Council, and also the program director for Mi Casa. And Vladville Camer, one of the owners.
Okay. Do we have any questions for him?
How many days a week?
How many days a week you guys are gonna be open? How many days?
Seven, seven days.
Seven? It's an adult day, okay.
Is this the one, are you guys the same ones that own the French Social?
No, no.
Different one?
No, so this is located at three thirty-three Broadway, which is-
Girish Peters, yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah, it's not the same owners as the French Social.
Okay, I just wanna, what are you what are you gonna do for hours? I apologize. Oh, I see it right here, seven to five, seven days a week, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the common victual license for Mi Casa Adult Daycare.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and has been seconded to approve the common victual's license for Mi Casa Adult Day Healthcare. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, you're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda. Is Q Management, one hundred Franklin Street? Mister David Q, manager of one of my pack of stores, is requesting a common victual's license.
Hi. Hello.
How you doing?
Good.
Your name for the record?
Jenny.
Okay. So what is he gonna do, cook food in there now?
Uh, sandwiches and stuff like that.
What are the hours right now?
Well, we're opening on Sunday, eight to ten, and Sunday's nine to nine.
All right.
Okay, any questions?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the common victual license for Q Management, one hundred Franklin Street.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and has been seconded to approve the common victual's license for Q Management. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Easy Living LLC D B A Romero's Pizza, Justin Romero, at four eighty Havil Street. Plans to open on February first. Is that your name for the record?
Justin Romero.
Is that the old Star Pizza?
It's called Lucky's Pizza now.
Lucky's Pizza, Lucky's.
Right there, going up the hill.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion. We approve the common victual license for Romero Pizza.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and has been seconded to accept the common victual's license for Romero Pizza. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're all set, yeah. So the next item on the agenda is W A O Grill LLC Miguelida Saldana, formerly Tropical Pizza.
Yes.
Your name for the record?
Miguelito Saldana.
Okay, anybody have any questions? That's the old-
Right, by the liquor store.
Yeah, that's the old-
Master Pizza.
What was it, uh, oh, Tropical Pizza, yeah.
No, that's the one, the one in sixty, sixty-eight Havil Street.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the common victual license for W A O Grill LLC.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and has been seconded for approve the common victual's license for W A O Grill LLC. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Juan Lopez D B A Lesquina Restaurant at thirty-nine Manchester Street Lawrence.
Juan Lopez.
Any question, that's the one on Manchester Street.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the common victual license for Black Lesquina Restaurant.
Second.
So there's a motion on the floor and has been seconded to approve Lesquina Restaurant for a new common victual's license. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, gonna be Park Street Convenience, Marino Lusa.
Good evening, Marino Luna.
That's my name.
Okay. So the same thing is here for a new common victual's license for Park Street Convenience Store.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the common victual license for Park Street Convenience Store.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and has been seconded to approve for the Park Street Convenience Store. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sirs, ma'ams?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. Before we adjourn, do you have a question, ma'am?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Jeng Lo. I have the laundry mart and the convenience store at two sixty-four and two eighty South Union Street.
Ma'am, you gotta pull the mic down a little bit, please, thank you. Please state your name again.
Jeng Lo is my name. I work at the laundry mart, but I own the building. And the reason, three weeks ago, I came here to send a letter to request about my tenant, the South Union Street Market.
Uh huh.
We would like, I would like to know what reason, how he lose the Y and B license.
She's the owner of the newest one, but they got the K two.
Mm-hmm.
She owns the property, you know, pulled their liquor license. She wants to know why we pulled their liquor license.
No, they still have the liquor license, yeah.
No, they pulled it. Yeah, caught some K two twice.